I call this meeting of Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is 6:01. All right, item one, invocation and pledge of allegiance, if you will. Trustee Kidd, please.
If you feel so inclined, please bow your heads and pray with me.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for loving us. Thank you for your grace. Dear Father, we just, at this time of year, this time of season, we just help us to reflect on everything that you've given us, all the blessings that you've bestowed on this district and on our children and on our families and on our teachers and our staff. Lord, we just pray for their protection over these holidays. We pray, Lord, that those that are in need, that others reach out and meet those needs and just pray just for your oversight and your love throughout this time. Dear God, thank you for those in this room and their hearts for serving your children, your students, Lord. And we just ask for your guidance and your direction for tonight's meeting. We just pray that you be here and just bless this time together and as we make decisions on behalf of the district. Lord, thank you again for loving us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas by our pledge of allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Item two, citizen participation. Ms. Goffrey, has anyone signed up to address the board?
Yes, ten citizens have signed up to speak.
Okay. This is pretty long, so... The next item on the agenda is public comment from those who've registered to address the board in accordance with Board Policy BED. Everyone is reminded that this portion of the meeting is not appropriate for them for bringing complaints for which resolution is sought. Before complaints can be submitted to the Board of Trustees as an agenda item, they must be addressed by following the appropriate policies and administrative procedures. Also, please keep in mind that the board has no obligation to protect...the board has an obligation to protect the confidentiality of information that could possibly personally identify a student. The board cannot permit comments that include student's name or any information that might identify a specific student. This prohibition does not apply if the person speaking is the student's parent or guardian, or is the...over the...the student is over the age of eighteen and speaking about him or herself. If an issue is mentioned that is not...if an issue is mentioned that is on tonight's agenda, posted agenda, the board would defer its decision of the issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any subject that is not on the board's posted agenda, the board cannot deliberate or make a decision, but it can furnish specific factual information or cite existing policy in response to inquiries. Due to the number of citizens that has registered to address the board, each person is limited to no more than three minutes for their presentation. This will allow the board to hear from citizens as well as ensure the board meeting runs efficiently, as there are many important items on the board agenda that must be considered. Everyone in attendance is reminded to treat all speakers with respect regardless of whether they agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Any person who does not conduct himself or herself accordingly will be asked to leave or will be escorted from the room. Ms. Goffrey, please call the first person.
Lucy Thomas.
Firstly, I want to make you all aware that what I have to say here is not an attack on anyone. I do not believe that what a person says defines them. I do not doubt that many people on this board are good people, but good people sometimes make bad choices. I would love to stand here today and talk about love, but what I need to talk about is the U.S. Constitution. Mr. Inman has made it clear on social media that a man wearing heels or makeup or being homosexual is against his personal religious beliefs, calling it ungodliness. He has also stated, "We need God back in our schools." Whilst Mr. Inman is entitled to his personal freedom of speech and religion, he also has a constitutional duty to separate himself from his religious views when he serves on this school board. The U.S. Department of Education clearly states, "The First Amendment establishes certain limits on the conduct of public school officials as it relates to religious activity. When school officials make public statements, they must ensure at all times that they are clear as to who and what they are representing." Mr. Inman failed to do this whilst identifying himself as a Conroe ISD trustee to the media. If someone takes issue with a school activity, they have the right to remove their child from it on religious grounds, but under no circumstances did they have the right to remove anyone else's child or force a school to impose their religious views. A religion banning men wearing heels is no different to another banning females showing their hair. We must respect their religious views by allowing them to remove themselves from situations where women have uncovered hair or permit them to cover their own hair. We do not impose the covering of female hair. We allow freedom of religious expression without persecution of others. Mr. Inman could have made a choice to privately discuss his religious beliefs with the principal of Willis ISD. He could have privately arranged for the removal of his child during activities where men may be wearing heels or gay people are present, as is his right. Instead, Mr. Inman made a choice to use his prominent position in our community, identifying himself as a Conroe ISD trustee, to try and impose his religious beliefs on an entire school. We do not need any God in our schools, Mr. Inman. We need the protections we are constitutionally entitled to. We need to promote acceptance in this magnificently diverse world. Our schools should be celebrating difference and setting a positive example, showing how people of different religions with different lifestyles, cultures, and worldviews can live in harmony alongside each other. I fully respect Mr. Inman's right to remove his child from certain activities. I do not expect a public school board member to call for a principal of another school district to lose their job because they do not share the same religious beliefs. How can teachers of Conroe ISD be sure that Mr. Inman will not use his position of power to remove them if their religious beliefs differ? How can students that follow any belief system or none feel safe and supported at school when a school trustee is promoting his religious belief and God above others? Our children are protected by the First Amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Harris.
Hey there. My name is Emily Harris. My husband and I are raising three children here in the Conroe ISD School District. I am very concerned with board member Dale Inman's views toward the LGBTQ community. He said, and I quote, "The LGBT community is one of the most vile hate-filled communities I've ever come across, and I've spent time in the Middle East with Hezbollah and radical Muslims. These folks are vicious." His words are unnecessarily harmful and strikingly bold. Mr. Inman certainly does not stand with the Conroe ISD freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation policy. Mr. Inman has violated this policy not only regarding religion, calling Muslims radical, but also with regard to the gender-based harassment portion of this policy, which states as follows: Quote, "Gender-based harassment includes physical, verbal, or nonverbal conduct based on the student's gender, the student's expression or characteristics perceived as stereotypical for the student's gender, or the student's failure to conform to stereotypical notions of masculinity or femininity. Examples of gender-based harassment directed against a student, regardless of the student's or the harasser's actual or perceived sexual orientation or gender identity, may include offensive jokes, name-calling, slurs, or rumors." I would like to remind Mr. Inman that there are without a doubt LGBTQ teens within the sound of his voice in Conroe ISD, and his public comments have harmful and dangerous implications for LGBTQ teens. On that note, I have attached this image for your review. I am disturbed by all of Mr. Inman's homophobic and xenophobic comments, but I want to turn your attention now toward Mr. Inman's alarming actions involving a student. Here you can see that Mr. Inman has publicly circulated a student's name on social media with whom he obviously disagrees. How wholly inappropriate to produce a student's name under these circumstances. Again, there are harmful and dangerous implications for his actions. As a CISD parent, I am appalled that a sitting board member found this appropriate. This should be concerning to us all. I see that CISD very recently changed their website landing page to read "All Means All. Well done." I love the sentiment, but I do not think Mr. Inman espouses it. Mr. Inman's anti-LGBT views, as well as his anti-Muslim views, absolutely cloud his judgment. How disappointing to have a board member who is not an advocate for all. Lastly, I'd like to make this board aware that at least two formal civil rights complaints have been filed with the Department of Education because of Mr. Inman's words and actions.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Ginger Pilot.
Tonight, I will again address the concerns I have as a parent and how different conversations are now being had with our youth, teachers, parents, and the general public due to hateful and harmful words from someone who is in a position that we should all look up to. As you all are aware, that person is Dale Inman. Every day, parents have to take steps to protect their children. Everything from wearing a seatbelt, looking away from their phone when they're walking, eating healthy, to helping them be confident in themselves. When you are a parent of a child that is also a part of the LGBT community, you have to also take action in preparing them to cope with potential negative reactions that are based on fear and misinformation. You have to hope that the school will not make your child feel less than the amazing person that they are. I am a part of several groups that exist because of fear, misinformation, and outright hate against a community. I am a part of these to help both adults and children and to let them know I'm here for them, that I love them, and I will help them in any way that I can. Dale Inman stated that the LGBT community didn't need protecting, but the conservative Christians did. It is sad to see that he thinks that there is a division in these communities. I am not a part of the Christian community. However, I will stand when you do to pray out of respect. I do accept that your religion is precious to you. I will not place judgment on you because we believe different things. I also will not lump an entire Christian community in a statement because a community is made up of so many different people that they should not be judged based on the actions of one or many. We are all one community and should love and support each other and know that there are differences in us. When someone in Dale Inman's position says that a community...says that the community these children are a part of is vile, what do you think this does? What impact do you think this has on a young mind? Negative words can have a long-lasting...can have long-lasting results that spread far beyond the person whom they were intended. Words are powerful. Their power arises from our emotional response to them. They can spark love, fear, sadness, happiness. As a member of the school board, your words should empower, be used to uplift, encourage, and to help build up a child, not tear them down. In the last month's meeting, people spoke of the great things that Dale Inman has done in his life. The reason we are coming to speak is not to erase those good deeds that you have done, but it is to help you understand that you did speak out into the world some hateful words that warrant an apology. You owe our youth an apology. When we heard...we then heard that his words were not directed to any children. Again, you spoke these words out into the world. That means they're out there for all to hear. I know I'm out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Nix.
Last name?
Nix.
Nix. Thank you.
Hi, y'all. This is...my name is John Nix. Couple, three things I want to talk about. First, I'd like to see wifi policy changed for this building to where we can access social websites like Facebook and such. Software coverage stinks. I have Cricket, no coverage. Verizon, only my outside Verizon, only my bar. Can't communicate with the outside world on YouTube, so I'd like to see wifi policies changed on that. Item number two, I'd like to see the delivery policies changed for...that students can have food delivery. I'm an app-based driver. They still do it. They'll say, "Need you outside," or put it under a bench or whatever. Everything at the high...so I'd like to see the policy changed where they can feel safe, maybe have a table outside the high schools or something, like Time Volume SD does. Those are the two things I'd like to say. And on the third issue, I'd like with everyone else, it's time for the trustee and question to step down. There are things that you can say that are hurtful. There's...we have freedom of speech, but our time's going to cross the line. Like, I can't say I want to blow up the cop and not get...not expect to get arrested, but the best thing to do is for this trustee and question to just step down for like, maybe even give it a period of six months for the board can...for the CISD to heal from this, and we start 2020 fresh. We don't need all this mess on here and all this bigotry and hatred against the LGBTQ community. That's all I have to say. I hope you have a great Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Amber Fusca.
Your responsibility as school board members is to set the vision and goals for the district, adopt policies that give the district direction to set priorities and achieve its goals, and to focus on student achievement, implementing policies that will ensure success for all students. When our public school system fails to render help and equal opportunity to special needs students, that is an issue. Being the parent of a special needs child is exhausting. It's difficult enough wondering daily if you're doing right by your child, if you've done the right things, if you've done enough things, if you've just made a decision that could alter your child's life forever, in good or bad ways. The added stress of fighting a district for services your child is legally entitled to is unacceptable. Once is a chance, twice is a coincidence, the third time is a pattern. The state of Texas has a pattern of denying special education that has reached epidemic proportions, and Conroe ISD has had a part in continuing this issue. I am not the first parent to stand here and bring up this issue, but I will do everything in my power to make sure I am one of the last. The true measure of our society is how we treat those that are most vulnerable. Within the school system, special needs children are among the most vulnerable. You are the heads of Conroe ISD, but you must also be the neck and move it...move the district in the direction you choose. I am asking you to choose to champion special education and children with special needs. Make sure Conroe ISD is following their legal obligations of child find and actually identifying children with special needs. Early identification of cognitive or other disorders, especially autism, can be a life-changing difference for both the child and the family. Increase the budget for special education and provide the services needed to give special needs children, students, the chance to learn the skills, to work, to live independently, and to be functioning members of our society. As I said last month, your actions, or lack thereof, speak volumes. The message being received is that you care nothing for special education or the children that require it. If that is not your intended message, be the change. Put special education on the agenda so that we can have an open and honest discussion and do something about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jason Rocha.
Hello, board. Thank you for having us again, having us every month until there's a public apology or some kind of action from either the board or the district. I'm going to read this same statement over and over right now. Quote, "The black community is the most vile hate-filled communities I've ever come across. The Christian community is one of the most vile hate-filled communities I've ever come across. Women are the most vile hate-filled people I've ever come across." I...I'm very cynical, and part of me thinks if somebody had said that, any one of those statements, the board would have reacted a lot differently. I think you guys did what you could. I think that it's a shame that we have a lot of red tape and your hands are tied, but now is the time to make that change for the future. To...I'm on two boards myself. You can't do anything right away, but I know that you can change the bylaws to eventually restrict things like this from happening again. And I don't care if it's next year or in two years, but the kids of this district have to see this every time they think of Mr. Inman for the next three years. I'm going to get a little personal. So, I skipped out on Thanksgiving because my grandmother said some awful things. She said that gay marriage was like inviting her to go to an abortion. So, my mother invites me to Thanksgiving dinner, and I said...this was about a week before...a week after the meeting. And I said, "Well, unfortunately, Mom, there have been a lot of political things going on in Conroe ISD." This is a text. I can send it to you guys if you want. So, unfortunately, every time I read the statements from Mr. Inman, every time I heard somebody else repeat those statements, I thought of her. I'm a 34-year-old person. Imagine what a teenager felt, what a parent of the teenager felt when they heard these statements, when they have to see it in the news time and time again. And what's worse is when they see it in the news that there's not more action. The Facebook...I'm sorry, your website posts, I think it's a great start. I do. I just...I...we want more. I don't know how much more you can do, but do it all, because the one voice that stands out the most is one that on good authority does not represent the majority of this board. So, be that voice. Be the louder voice together, because we know that you can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wendy Mauer.
Good evening. I'm the proud parent of a child at Suchma Elementary, and first off, I'd like to say how loving of a campus Suchma is, and thank you for that. As a former special education teacher for over 10 years, I know many of the barriers in public education, but once I became a parent of a child with disabilities, I saw the real challenges that families like ours face. I'm here to talk to you about the vision of having all teachers having special education certification. I want each of you to think of what inclusion looks like. What does it look like to you? What does it look like in the community? As sitting on the board for the Texas Council for Developmental Disabilities Partners in policymaking, I've learned the long-term outcomes for my child as he gets older as far as state services, and it's not a very pretty picture. As a parent, I have a fear of knowing that my 90% of individuals with autism are unemployed. That data reflects the early experiences, the life outcomes for my child. My 90% is currently sitting in your general education classroom. If my child had a more inclusive educational experience where all the staff on campus had the certification, training, and ongoing support, would he have the opportunity to break that 90% and have a meaningful purpose within his community? To me, that's inclusion. I want my child to have access to all the amazing teachers and programs within your district, not just the ones with a segregated certification or segregated support. Ask yourself how a Conroe ISD can be the leadership of school districts within the state of Texas where teachers have no segregated certifications. Think of the amount of children that you will be able to reach. Together, whether our children have disabilities or not, hand in hand, we can all work together. I know that we are having a lot of children within the general education classroom that are not reaching their full potential because their teachers do not have this training or the staff or the certification. Our administrators do not have the training or support to give effective immediate feedback to their staff for the training and support for children with disabilities. There's no accountability when it comes to this. We have got to make a change. I hope that this board considers your teacher certification requirements, the district goals, and think of the highly qualified teacher reimbursements the district can acquire back from the state. But most of all, think of how Conroe ISD can work towards becoming the state model of districts by becoming the first inclusive district in the state of Texas. If all means all, then we must move forward proactively to service all of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ty, and I am a sophomore at the Woodens High School, and I'd like to thank you for letting me speak today and holding this. I'd like to talk on behalf of my fellow students and classmates. More specifically, I'd like to repeat a quote that was publicly released from board member Dale Inman that I have found particularly distasteful. It reads that "The LGBTQ community is one of the most vile hate-filled communities I've ever come across, and I've spent time in the Middle East with..." Sorry if I mispronounced this, "Hezbollah and radical Muslim...and radical Muslims. These folks are vicious." Sorry if I'm a little nervous. I don't do a lot of public speaking. I'm not a member of the LGBTQ community or of the Muslim community, but I can see the effects that statements like these have on the students of CISD. And school is hard already. I'm a member of the baseball team and an improv troupe and currently studying for finals as we speak, or midterms, excuse me. And if...the goal is to minimize stress put on students, it's not very helpful when people that are supposed to represent us are not including us and speaking out publicly against us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ty.
Nicole May.
Hi. I'm here to talk about dyslexia, but I want to start with something kind of fun. We have some Christmas cards, and they're written by some really special people.
Thank you.
Our kids.
Thank you.
Our dyslexic kids. So, you will see in these cards some misspelled words, some backwards letters, some handwritten writing. But you'll also find in here some beautiful sentiment and some really creative drawings. I don't know, my son drew a picture that was supposed to look like an anime of Skater Hubert, but it doesn't quite look that way.
Oh, we got to see that.
He said, "That's the worst anime I've ever written in my life." But I said, "It's fine. It's fine."
You see it? I don't...
But I have the privilege of knowing quite a few of these kids. Perhaps one day you guys will get to know them as well. These kids are my heroes. They go to school every day and work hard, and school is not easy for them because what they do every day is read all day long. And for a dyslexic student, reading and writing is very difficult. So, basically, for eight hours a day, it's really hard. So, you know, I had a bunch of stuff written. I'm just not going to go with it. I'm just going to basically summarize kind of where we stand with everything. We believe we're really under-identifying dyslexics in our district. The 20% is what they say, experts say, is out there for dyslexics. We're identifying 5%. We're also saying that the budget is not enough. It's a $3 million budget, is what I've been told. And if we're only identifying five...and I think they're maxed out. I think they're doing everything they can with that $3 million. They're spreading it as far as they can go, but it's not enough. You know, we need to identify more. I mean, I'm willing...I will go away if you guys get to 10%, but I think, you know, we need to really address, like, how do we come up with $3 million, and how do we say that that was enough when we're not hitting the mark on it? And we know that students that do not get remediation and intervention for dyslexia, quality remediation and intervention, do not finish high school, and if they do, they don't go on to accomplish their dreams. And that's really what we're here for. And we're asking to really relook at the quality of services that we're offering. We're offering the bare minimum, and so we're really hoping to get more from that. So, I did have the privilege of meeting with Dr. Upshaw, and yes, a couple of us did. So, we had our first good meeting. It was a tough... It was a tough meeting, right? But it was good, we did it. And with Dr. Upshaw, Dr. Henry, and Tracy Landis, the dyslexia specialist for the district, we hope to have a lot more meetings. We definitely hope to have a member of special education present because our student population also falls within special education, and we have some pretty big concerns within that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Tasha Smith?
Doctor Tasha Smith. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, President Williams, Board of Trustees, Dr. Knoll. Again, I'm Tasha Smith, the proud principal of Conroe High School, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you all this evening. As you know, we have many amazing Conroe High School alumni, just like the two we have on our school board, Mr. Scott Kidd and Mr. John Husbands.
Pushing it.
I am here tonight to publicly show our appreciation for a gift that our campus and community has received. A Conroe High School alumnus who wants to remain anonymous has graciously made a donation of over $7,000 to pay off the lunch debt for our students at Conroe High and Washington Junior High. Drawing from his own experience in Conroe ISD, the donor relayed, "There is so much I owe to the teachers, coaches, students, and parents I grew up with in Conroe. It was and continues to be a close, supportive community where you learn to take care of your neighbors." He mentioned that his former coach, Buddy Moorhead, lived by those words every day and taught them well. This donation is just a very small token of thanks and payback during this Christmas season, and I hope there are others that can pay it forward at schools in this city and county. We are grateful for this blessing for our students and their families. This also serves as a great example to all of our students and to us as adults, the importance of giving back. Thank you to our anonymous donor and all that support our Conroe Tigers every day. Thank you and sick 'em Tigers.
Thank you. I'd like to, to make a statement on that. Actually, the, the Salam reached out to me last week for this anonymous donation. And I know his heart and his spirit. And, you know, many of us, we drive by the stadium, we see Buddy Moorhead. I had the pleasure to play for him and know him. And it, you think about a stadium being named after somebody, you think of wins and losses, but it wasn't about that. He loved all students. He loved, you know, no matter the differences, he loved all students. And in that spirit, the, the donor wanted to challenge those in the community to, to make a difference, like he's just trying, like you said, a small token of his appreciation for everything that he experienced growing up here and challenge others to do the same. Fortunately, you know, we had that grant for the, to address homelessness. And as of this week, you know, we have 550 students in CISD that are homeless and, you know, over, over this holiday season. And so what has occurred through a, a year of trying to get community involvement, which we have, to help out these students in need, there was a discovery of, of an app that we can download, that everybody can download. And so if a child may just need a, a pair of shoes, or maybe a jacket, a winter jacket, something like that, that the app will allow to, somebody in the community to meet that need fairly easily. So we're encouraging those to, to kind of get involved with that, and there'll be more about that. But the reason I brought that up is because this donor is challenging the community, because we do have an incredible community of those that, that love our students, all students, and just an opportunity to reach out and, and make a difference in, in, in those kids' lives. So again, thank you for everything that you do. And I, I know they'll be very happy and pleased of everything you're doing there, and I'll report back to, to them on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well done.
Outstanding. Okay, thank you, Ms. Scott. Item three, consent agenda, gentlemen. I've received no request to remove anything on the consent agenda. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of consent agendas presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor. Motion passes, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item four, curriculum and instruction, consider approval of targeted improvement plans for San Jacinto and Creighton Elementary Schools. Dr. Knoll, please.
Dr. Phillips, present.
Thank you. President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Knoll. We're here tonight to present the targeted improvement plans for San Jacinto and Creighton Elementary Schools. And I think tonight we have several representatives from those campuses, so I just want to acknowledge them first and, and thank them for all their work in this plan. If y'all understand. They've worked very hard on putting this plan together. So starting this year, a campus with an overall grade of D must develop and implement a targeted improvement plan that is approved by the Board of Trustees. The schools must engage in a continuous improvement process to develop the plan, much like the process that Houston Elementary has participated in, in the past. However, Creighton and San Jacinto are not identified as schools in IR, but so the plan is presented and approved by you, but it is retained here locally and it's not turned into the state and the state does not oversee it. So here's a look at the accountability results from 2019 for each domain for the two schools. Remember, Domain One is how many students passed at the approaches level. Domain Two is about the progress of individual students and also how the schools compare with other schools like them. Domain Three is about closing gaps between various student groups. Here's a look at how the schools did overall in reading, math, and writing. You can see math is a strength for both of our schools and writing is a challenge. So these targeted improvement plans use the same planning process as Houston. They're based on the affective schools framework. The school teams went through a very robust needs assessment to identify their prioritized focused areas. Now, these targeted improvement plans are not the only plan that these schools are working under. They also developed a complete improvement plan at the district level that you approved last month. This is just what they need to work on as identified by the affective schools framework. So interestingly enough, after going through the needs assessment, both San Jacinto and Creighton ended up with the same two prioritized focused areas, and these also happened to be the same two that Houston had as well. And so as a district, we realize that this is probably an area that we could all get better at. And so this year, we have 17 schools that we're pulling together throughout the year to study these two essential actions and to get better at them. So the first one is objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments. And this is all about how teachers plan together, how they, how they plan their time, how they pace their lessons, how they differentiate for students of different levels. And the second prioritized focus area is data-driven instruction. And this is the strengths of teacher teams coming together, analyzing data, identifying areas of focus for students, and then targeting instruction for them. So we want to also let you know that there's some additional support that we're providing our two schools. San Jacinto, we've identified a temporary part-time campus administrator, a retired principal, who's going to come back and help support the campus, freeing up the principal to be able to work with teachers more. A positive behavior support liaison, full-time position, is going to be added at San Jacinto. We have a student support coach, a district student support coach, who is going over with more additional time devoted to San Jacinto. We have a certified Lone Star Governance Coach, who we have contracted with that's coming in to help. This is the same coach that also worked with Houston Elementary over the past couple of years. Dr. Tamika Taylor is the DCSI. She's out there bi-monthly, supporting the school, as is her team. Her data team is out there, working with teachers on the various data and tests that they give. And then finally, Dr. Upshaw and her team with curriculum and instruction, she is sending out district coordinators, coaches, and then Dr. Upshaw is also there herself. Creighton, we have similar support. We've give, provided Creighton with additional funds for planning days so that teachers can have uninterrupted time to, to plan. They also have, will get a full-time positive behavior support liaison. Dr. Tamika is out there bi-monthly, supporting them. They also work with our certified Lone Star Governance Coach. And then Dr. Taylor's team is out there with the data meetings, and of course, Dr. Upshaw with her team is providing support as well. So unless there are questions, we ask your approval for the targeted improvement plans for Creighton and San Jacinto Elementarys.
Do you have a couple of questions?
Let me get the motion first, if you don't mind. We have a motion, we have a second, now a discussion. Gentlemen, go ahead, trustee, Mr. Moore.
You had mentioned specifically on Domain Two, closing the gap.
Domain Three is closing the gap.
Does the transient student population of either one of those campuses have anything to do with that, with being, having difficulty tracking incoming students who don't have previous data, they're coming in for the first time to that campus from third or fourth grade and may not have data following them?
We do a pretty good job when we get ahold of them, assessing where they are. So I can't really say that that is an issue. A lot of the mobility is also from within the district, and so we're able to, to track down things that way, too. So I wouldn't say necessarily that that is a, a challenge.
Okay.
Good question, though.
And then, I was making a lot of notes and you were actually answering them. So I'm trying to go through and check it off. You had mentioned student support coaches. In, in, in your opinion, do we have adequate instructional coaches, both staffing and resources on those campuses, or do we need to look at that area as well?
Both, both of those schools are Title I, so they do have multiple instructional coaches that are designated just for them. In addition, we're also bringing in district coaches. So I, I do feel that the coaching is adequate. The behavior coaches, we have just recently increased them to a full, a full position, and that's because we were noticing the behavior concerns were escalating. And so I really, I, I think they're in pretty good shape with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, here are no further questions. We have a motion second, all in favor. Motion passes, thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, we're going to move right along. Item five, administration. Receive update on attendance zones for Stockton Junior High School. Dr. Knoll?
All right. Dr. Hines? Come forward.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Knoll. Tonight, I wanted to come back and give you an update on where we are with the Stockton Junior High Attendance Boundary Committee. Just to kind of refresh a little bit, we are opening a new junior high school in August of 2020, which is Stockton Junior High School. It will serve students in groups in grade seven and eight, and it's located at 2750 Excellence Avenue, and that's next to Bosman Intermediate School. And just kind of a reminder, this is Stockton on the map, and of course, this is where we have the, the solar field. This is Bosman, so you can kind of see, and Excellence Avenue cuts between what is the loop back to 3083. Couple renderings, later on this evening, you'll see some live pictures with a construction update. But these are just some of the renderings of the facility. Now, Pete Junior High School, which was, which opened in 2013, or actually relocated in 13, has a capacity of 1,450 students. It currently is at capacity, utilizing two portable classrooms. Washington Junior High, which is a 1951 facility, has a capacity of 700 students, and it has enrollment of 964 students, utilizing 11 portable classrooms. For next year, the Washington Junior High will be repurposed as Washington High School, which will allow programs at HAWK to relocate to that current site after Stockton Junior High School opened. So we, we are actually in a meeting today, working on making some plans for that. Stockton Junior High, High School will, with a capacity of 1,450 students, will provide 750 additional junior high seats in the Conroe feeder. So we know this is a challenging process. We recognize that schools are communities, that families have a history with their schools. They often purchase their homes to go to a certain school, and we understand that. And we, we also understand that the 10-year projection for our feeder is that we are going to go up to roughly 3,500 students, so which means we'll go over capacity at some point in the future, even after we open Stockton and repurpose Washington. So what we're trying to accomplish, we had some basic objectives as we set about this process. First and foremost, we wanted to develop what would be the attendance boundary for Stockton Junior High School. And if you're familiar, you know, its relationship to Pete, they're both on the north side, off the loop, and so they're kind of similar in terms of their, which led to kind of an east-west split, as we, and you'll see some of the maps here momentarily. To provide crowding relief at Pete, so the other goal was to reduce some enrollment at Pete, to leave some room for growth that we know is coming. But there's also a growth happening on the east side of our district as well. So it's, it's, we have to leave some room at Stockton. So we were trying to balance some of those, some of those challenges. So we were looking, aiming, you know, somewhere in that 300 range to try to buy some time with both junior highs. So to just kind of take you through a little bit, this is the current map and, and as it exists currently. And so we started from that map. And to do this, we have a committee, and, and I will say, we, it's been a wonderful committee with, which to work. They've really done an outstanding job and been very thorough, so enjoyed working. This has been a good group. This committee's looked at and developed over 20 scenarios that we've brought forward and looked at and evaluated. In addition, the committee also looked at zoning that's related to intermediate schools. So as we've kind of worked through the process, we also began to look at how that affected intermediate zones. We know that intermediate zones are going to change in the future. The second school in this bond package will be a, a K6 school in the Conroe area. So at some point, we'll go back and look at fifth, sixth enrollment. In addition, when we open the replacement junior high from Moorhead, and that's repurposed as an intermediate school, we will create some fifth and sixth grade seats on the east side. And so there's certainly some, some opportunities in the future to look at intermediate school. We, as we went through this process, we had several considerations. We didn't take it lightly. We understand that each student that we look at represents a family. What we do feel strongly about is, after however this works out, that we will have quality schools at both schools and feel good about what we'll offer. And then our timeline is to have, hopefully for you, in January, a recommendation from the committee. And so what I wanted to do is just kind of walk you through a little bit about the three scenarios that are currently up on our website, and they've been up there a few weeks. Currently, we have Pete Junior High, as I mentioned, 1,450 students. Just to give you an idea, demographically, it is 52% economically disadvantaged. And Washington Junior High, at 964 students, is 81% economically disadvantaged. In Scenario A, which I'm going to pull up here in a second, Pete would come in under, and these are geocoded numbers, so we use geocoded, that is, who lives in the boundaries, not necessarily who goes to school there. There could be differences based on special programs or parents who teach there and bring their children. So this is who lives in the boundaries. But Pete would come down to 1184, and Stockton would be at 1236. And you can see under Scenario A, it's roughly a 10% difference in the socioeconomics. It impacts 655 students. An impact, we measured who ended up at a different school, but really, everybody at Washington will be at a different school. So it was who at Washington would be at Pete, and who at Pete would be at Stockton, is how we calculated that, just to give you an idea. And as we looked at it, we, there are some impacted areas, and so all of the Washington area would go to Stockton, except for the areas that really, in central Conroe, we had some areas that included some of the neighborhoods and apartment complexes, Tall Timbers and the Conroe Apartments, MLK Park, and South First, and Foster Oaks, and Pecan Grove. So those areas that were currently at Washington would be at Pete. And areas rezoned from Pete to Stockton included the, those north zones along the loop, which is Wiggins Village and Moss Hill, Northwood Acres, Sunset Ridge, Woodside Manor. And then there's those east zones that, when you saw the map, that kind of jump out at you, that cross over, and I won't name off all of those. And then there's those south zones, and those zones certainly run along the freeway. That's River Plantation, and Stewart's Forest, and Creighton Ridge, and so that includes those areas back out. So on this map, under Scenario A, all the light red areas represent what is currently at Pete, that would be at Stockton. And then the lighter blue represents something, the, the areas that are currently zoned at Washington, that would be at Pete. And the dark blue would be currently Pete, and the dark red would be currently at Washington. So that just gives you kind of an idea of the changes under Scenario A. Scenario B had Pete at 1177, Stockton at 1,243. This one added at 62 and a half percent to 75%. The impact was less, went down to 492. And so this was, and certainly, Scenario B is the, very much the popular with the committee, very popular with the committee in terms of what we very popular with the committee in terms of what we looked at. And they are the, the bigger maps are over on the side, certainly, that's a little easier to see some of the streets. This is very much based off of, very similar to A, in the, in the, I'm gonna go back to, let me just go up to B. The dividing line really kind of runs along, we, the committee tried different lines. We looked at 75, we looked at 45, and, you know, it just didn't get us the right number, so we kept kind of moving the line further east to kind of get the numbers. So really, this ends up along First Street and Pacific Street for the most part, and then, and then the railroad tracks, and then it just kind of juts in in town in the central part. So this is scenario B. It's a little, very similar. One of the area I'll point out is this area that is just east of 75, that, and this was an area of a lot of discussion for us, because it is an area that currently goes to Crier, as does the other area that is light red next to it, and so this map, that group stayed at Pete, so it reduced, that's really where the number came for reducing the number of crossover. So we really looked at that. The scenario C, very similar to scenario B, numbers, it's a little different configuration, again, mostly in the central part of Conroe. It does, starting with A, but it didn't have sections 38A and 40B, which are in the central zone. It excluded some areas such as Tall Timbers and Foster Oak and Woods Way. The areas that go from Pete to Stockton are the same under B as C, so most of that was just a change, and again, in town, but the same impact number. And so I will tell you, from the committee's standpoint, that it was more attracted, it has been more attracted to the lower impact trying to achieve our goals, but we felt like all three of these fit within the parameters, but certainly.
Can you show us the third map?
Oh, I'm sorry. There it is. It's just the third map.
And that doesn't make as much sense as the other one, as B to B.
Yeah, and B is the, and I will tell you from the committee feedback, B is the, by far and away, the popular.
But I know it takes a lot of options, so, you know.
Yes, sir.
What, how many kids are in what neighborhood?
Yes, sir, exactly. And every time we run those scenarios, we recalculate. So I want to just briefly touch on intermediate. We currently look, we looked at the intermediate maps as well. We know that there are some changes coming. There was a lot of discussion and feedback. This currently represents the red areas, our Stewart area, which is rapidly growing. The green represents Crier. The yellow represents Travis, and the blue Bosman. And what I will tell you is, under all of our scenarios, Travis becomes a split intermediate school. And what we worked to was try to say, okay, can Bosman stay 100%, and Crier stay 100%, we know Travis is going to be split. All three of the options have a fairly even split at Travis, so the cohort size is meaningful, meaning that if you, when you go to a new school, you're not going alone. There should be a good number of students that go with you, and so we wanted to look at that. But again, the location in the central part of our district, and we also want to be mindful of not taking too many back and moving around, knowing that in the future, a few years, we'll have to rezone again in some intermediates. We want to be careful of that. So we ran two scenarios. Both of them have minor impact. One had an 80 impact, the other one is like in the 30s. Under this impact, for this map, probably easier to show you, it's kind of a clockwise rotation, so the light blue would be moving from Crier over to Bosman. This light yellow would be moving from Bosman over to Travis, and then this light green area along 75 would be moving from Travis to Crier. And committee looked at that. Actually, scenario two is a lot more popular with our committee, and this one is an impact of 32, and it really just moves one section, which is that Robinwood section along the north loop from Crier to Bosman. So that neighborhood would be at Bosman for intermediate, and then stay at Stockton for the junior high, and because they're right next door, just, we were trying to accomplish that. So scenario two is the, certainly at this point, the committee's favorite. I can just give you that feedback in terms of how they're going. We've had some comments. We've sent home one update. We'll send another one home to you probably next week, and just you can kind of see the comments that have been coming in. Generally, you know, with share, and the feedback has been, people don't want to change, and we kind of expected that. And so there hasn't really been any surprises, but, you know, I think in terms of, I know, we've had some people, someone from our committee lives in this neighborhood, and they were certainly felt better about, hey, if we're gonna move, moving intermediate would help us, and so we did get that feedback. So that's really kind of the update. We do have it all on our webpage under the ABC committee site. We also have the current maps, and they've been up there a few weeks. We've been through two phases of the process. The first phase was kind of the overview in October and then November. We were out sharing our three options, and we'll be back in January to let the public know what the committee's going to recommend, and then we want to bring to you our final recommendation at the January school board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Hines. Gentlemen, any questions? All right, keep moving. All right, item five, B, consider an approved selection of construction manager at risk for York Junior High School. Dr. Knoll.
Well, good evening, President Williams, members of the board. Dr. Knoll, it's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval, the selection of a construction manager at risk for York Junior High School Logistics, which is a project resulting from our recent bond election. So our design architect, PPK, helped us prepare a RFQ, Request for Qualifications, and we, the district, published it. We advertised it as required by law, and we've had 10 companies respond to our request for qualifications. Now, the law also limits us to no more than five to participate in the second step of our two-step selection process. Our committee read each of the 10 responses, graded them carefully, and we shortlisted five contractors, Durtec Inc., GTT Contractors, Joris, General Contractors, Marshall Construction, and Weber Commercial Construction, to participate in the second step for a two-step construction, or two-step selection process. Our committee has, is recommending that Marshall Construction Company be selected as the offerer that presents the best value for the district based on our criteria. I'd also like to let you know that we're showing you the total rankings of all the, all the shortlisted of all five, just in case we need to move to the second rate in the negotiation process, but we feel Marshall is the best value, and we are asking for your approval at this time.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who built York?
Marshall did.
Excuse me a second. Okay, we have a motion second, no more discussion. Wait, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Our motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Foster, let's go to item C, please. Five C, consider approval selection of construction manager at risk for Washington Project, Maintenance Project, and HAWK Project.
So just like the previous item, we're asking for your consideration and approval of the selection of a construction manager at risk for our Washington Maintenance and HAWK Project, again, resulting from our 2019 bond recently. At this time, our design architect, the IBI Group, helped us prepare, and we published the RFQ. We had five companies respond to the request for qualifications. All five of them were subsequently invited to participate in step two. They were Ansel O'Brien, GTT, Joris Construction, Sodalco Construction, and Teal Construction. Our committee read them all, graded them carefully, and after receiving the pricing in step two, our committee feels that GTT Construction is selected to be the offerer, submitted the best value for the district for this project, and likewise, we're also publishing all of the rankings as part of the board item, so we can see that if we need to move to the second offerer, we can. At this time, we're requesting your approval of GTT as our construction manager at risk.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I'm gonna stand and vote.
All right. Oh, some abstention. All right, so all in favor? Abstain, abstentions, one. That's it. Motion passes. Thank you. Item five, D, approval. Consider approval selection of Geotech Surveying, Test, and Balance Service Providers and Authorizers who pretend to negotiate next key contracts for those services. Dr. Knoll.
At this time, we bring forward for your consideration and approval, a selection of multiple vendors for multiple types of work. Each of these types of work is required by law for the work that we do, the construction and capital improvement processes we do. Geotechnical engineers are used to study the ground and help us design our foundations over on the dirt by which we build our buildings on. Surveyors are required to locate them appropriately and help us with land acquisition, things of that nature, and our test and balance companies help us make sure the air conditioning is functioning correctly at the end of a, in a construction project. So we had published a request for qualifications for these. They're all professional services in the engineering fields, so we're creating a pool based on our overall projected project volume, again, resulting mostly from our bond election most recently. So our pool of, recommended pool of geotechnical providers is Terricon Consultants, HTS Consultants, Professional Service Industries, Geoscience Engineering, Alpha Testing, and Nino and more. Our survey respondents that we're recommending as the pool is Jones and Carter, Land Tech, Jeffrey Moon and Associates, and for test and balance, it's Engineered Air Balance, TAB Technologies, Mesa Commissioning, National Precision Air, and Campus Engineering. This time, we're requesting your approval of these in the pools, and each discipline will be negotiated individually for each project. It's not a guarantee of work, but it gives us a selection to deal with as we deal with our volume moving forward. At this time, we request your approval.
We have a request, a motion. Motion, Mr. Sanders? All right, second, Mr. Key. Questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Eber.
Just real quick, they, a part of, part of putting this in and getting the business involved, whenever you're coming to us with an overall cost of a project, this type of service is included into that overall cost of the project, correct?
Absolutely. The, like, take the bond example, as an example, our projects that we advertise for the bond, the numbers that the public see include these as part of that process. So it's not just construction, not construction and design, it is an all-encompassing number. We advertise it handles everything we need to bring that project to completion.
Great, thank you.
I just have one question. How, how many of these have local offices here in Conroe? Of all three disciplines, I mean, just, you know, of the 15, there's one or whatever, and then also, were there any locals that were overlooked? Overlooked or out, outscored, as it may be, whichever?
Right, I'm, there were some in the surveying category were locals that were outscored, but we, I mean, surveying's not as a voluminous discipline as for us. Geotech, four of the selected are, have offices here in Conroe. Two of them are in Houston. And then for our test and balancing companies, none of them are actually in Conroe, so they're all coming out of the Houston market force.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion is over. All right, all in favor? Great, motion passes. All right, item five, E, receive capital improvement update. Mr. Foster.
Well, at this time, I'd like to bring up to date for the capital improvements we have underway throughout the district, starting with Stockton Junior High. So Stockton is scheduled to open in August of 2020, so it's roughly about 75% complete at this point. We've been talking about getting the building envelope closed in. As you can see from this angle, we are nearing that, so we're roughly speaking about a month from being in a dry state for the entirety of the building. So I reported last month that we're continuing to produce solar power. We are working our way around the building with masonry and glass, things of that nature, closing up now. If you're looking at an actual picture of the front entry of Stockton, and then on the inside, it's starting to become a school, so where it is dry, we are able to hang drywall to our tape, glue, and finish, and we're starting the process of painting throughout. So you're looking at the, basically, the block filler or the prime coat for the CMU block down the, I believe that's the fine arts corridor for that building now. So like I said, it is scheduled to open in August of 2020, and we perceive it to be on schedule at this time.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, sir.
Have you informed Dr. Stockton that he's only going to have one trophy case to utilize?
We gave him one, but we, we had to enlarge it to about 40 feet long.
His wife said she wanted all that stuff out of the house.
Yeah.
Well, moving forward to Conroe High School, the additions and renovations project, which is, this is probably the last time we're actually going to talk about it, is completing, well, we term it as Phase One, which is all the work from the 2015 bond referendum. So you're looking to shut down the corridor, one of the new collaboration areas on the ground floor. You can see that we've been able to increase the space in the corridors on the oldest portions of the building a substantial amount to make it more user-friendly for the students and staff in that building. We've started loading the classrooms up with furniture, so over the holiday break, we're loading it up with technology, so it'll be ready to come back, ready for school, and the students return in January, and that is our update.
All right, item six, business finance, consider approval of purchasing buses using RFP 190504. Mr. Reeves.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board. Dr. Knoll, tonight, we are requesting the Board of Trustees approve the purchase of additional buses through RFP 190504 for school buses for an estimated expenditure of approximately $3.5 million. In September, the Board of Trustees awarded RFP number 190504 for school buses for an estimated $1.65 million. The prices are firm through August of 2020. With the passage of the 2019 bond referendum in November and the availability of additional grant funding, the district will have the ability to purchase additional buses. These buses will be used for replacing buses that have met their life expectancy and for student growth. Included in this request is 25 regular education buses, four mid-sized special education buses, and two multipurpose vehicles, all equipped with air conditioning and seat belts. By approving this item, the district will add approximately 46 new buses to the fleet, including the original purchase from September, and exchange 23 older, non-air-conditioned diesel buses through the TCEQ grant for a net of 23 new buses. Funds for this purchase are provided for in the Capital Maintenance Fund, TCEQ Grant, and the 2019 Capital Projects Funds. At this time, I request your approval.
Go move. A second.
Motion second, discussion. Mr. Huber.
Quick question, just because we're talking about the buses, and when you said that they have seat belts, I've never asked this question, but there's three to a, to a seat, so each kid has their own seat belt? It's not one that goes all the way across like at the roller coaster or something, right? I've never seen one, so I gotta ask. I know it's silly, but I've never, I've never, I've, I've wanted to go by and just walk on all these buses, see what they look like. It comes across this way? It's not just a lap?
It's a belt, yeah.
Okay.
Shoulder belt.
Y'all are all wondering, y'all just.
Like the roller coaster?
You know, pull it down.
Everyone bring a bus next month, I'll show it to them.
I was gonna say, Sam would know.
Yes.
There are three individual seat belts per seat, and it's a three-point tight seatbelt, so it's not just a lap belt, it's a shoulder.
He was expecting.
We knew what, you knew what you were doing.
We knew. Okay.
The TCEQ retirement of buses where you chop the engine in half or whatever you'd have to do to get the grant money. I've, I've been told that there's like-kind money for the propane buses, maybe out of the Volkswagen deal or something like that, grants. Are we applying for those, or that, is that for the fueling stations for the propane buses? What's it for?
The propane grant that we applied for, that is for propane buses. We are getting propane and diesel buses. There's a couple of different grants that we're working on for those. So this purchase that we did, this first purchase, it was 20 buses, which was the initial one, and these are the second, the five that we did now. I'm all over the place, I'm excited about this.
All I want to know is, is are you getting the propane grants, or can you get the buses and then apply for the grants, or is it going on simultaneous? Is that okay and all that? We are, we're doing it, right?
It's all simultaneous.
I, I don't, I don't need to tell you how to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves, I have one more question.
Do we need, one other question? Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to know, how many un-seat belted and un-air-conditioned buses do we have left in our fleet that we need to replace?
We were at about 130 or so. So if this purchase here, we're really putting the big dent in those buses.
Okay, so we're gonna still have about 100?
Yeah.
Well, after this, with the 46, we'll be on air conditioning, that's enough to seat though.
Okay. Well, I'm more, I, I mean, both are very important, but with living in Houston or in this part of the country, AC is important.
Yeah, we had about 585 buses recently in the board, Brian, buses last year, 2018. So it's going to take us a while to get a seatbelt fleet, but the AC buses, we had about 130 that we were trying to get out of the fleet.
Okay, okay.
And those are 2,000 models.
Yes. One last question on the propane buses. We only have one fueling station for propane, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So are we doing anything about that? Are we putting all the propane buses where the fueling station is?
Right now, they are up in Conroe, but we are looking at another. Right now, they are up in Conroe, but we are looking at another fueling grant.
Yeah, because there is some grants out there for that, too.
We still have to have some discussion on where that could possibly go, the size of it, but there's some grant funds for it.
And since the buses are ten, twelve thousand dollars higher, whatever they are for the propane, what's the payback in fuel savings, not even taking into account whether they're more green or whatever, but what's the, what's the money, say, on the breakeven?
I haven't done the numbers in a while, but to give you an idea, because propane has actually got more efficient engines, you were getting about three to four miles per gallon on them, and they're up to about five now. The diesel's also caught up a little bit better as well. We were getting, I think we're getting close to eight or nine miles per gallon for diesel, where we were getting about seven. So, propane fuel is cheaper, though, far cheaper than diesel, so you are gaining ground every time you pump a gallon of propane fuel, even though it's less efficient, it's still less, it's cheaper.
So, so, so we don't put you on the spot? Can you get back to us on that, on that breakeven point? What, you know, if you, if the same bus is traveling the same amount of miles, where's the, where's the breakeven on the twelve thousand dollars expenditure? Thanks.
Also, probably the maintenance costs and expected lifespan of comparing the two as well.
And of course, the fueling station expense.
All right, we have a motion second. I want to have a discussion. All in favor? All right, motion passes. All right, item six B, receive financial reports.
All right, Ms. Karen Garza.
President Williams, members of the board, and Doctor Noel, it is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements as of November thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. The first statement we'll look at this evening is the balance sheet for the general fund, the debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. The balance sheet shows the district's assets, liabilities, and fund balance. If we take a closer look at cash and investments, we'll focus on the general fund, cash on hand of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, bank deposits of four hundred and sixteen thousand, investments in the state pool of fifty-three point six million, our investments with Wood Forest National Bank of seventy-five point eight million, and our longer-term investments with TCG Investment Advisors of fifty-one point six million, for total cash and investments in the general fund of a hundred and eighty-one point five million dollars. The next statement we'll look at is the income statement. The income statement shows the revenues and expenditures of the district. Our revenues come from three major sources, local and intermediate, state program, and federal program revenues. Taking a look at local and intermediate sources, our largest generator of revenue in the general fund and debt service fund is our property tax collections. In the food service fund, food sales, and in self-funded insurance, premium contributions. Expenditures, a hundred and three point six million in the general fund. We'll look at expenditures by major object. Of course, in the general fund, you'll see that our largest expenditure is payroll. In child nutrition, supplies and materials, and in self-funded insurance, claims processing. You will see debt service, we'll have some major expenditures in February, of course, when we make our first debt payment, and in January when we sell our first block of Self-funded insurance, year-to-date revenue, twelve point two million, year-to-date expense of eleven point one million, for a net revenue over expense of one point one million. Our participation at the wellness centers continues to be strong, averaging five hundred and eighty-two year-to-date. Our investments as of November thirtieth, par value of three hundred and three point four million dollars. The pools are yielding one point nine two three. Our investments with Wood Forest National Bank are yielding one point eight nine. Our longer-term investments with TCG Investment Advisors yielding two point zero five, with a weighted average, average maturity of four hundred and fifty-one days. And our combined portfolio yielding one point nine one three with a WHAM of seventy-one days. And our benchmark, the ninety-day T-bill, is yielding one point five six three.
Ms. Garza, I have one question. If you go back just to one slide, the TCG yield, is that, is that improving from what I've seen in the last couple of months?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was thinking, because they're finally able to redirect some of the.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'd like to know a question. Just make a quick comment on the whole thing. Not a question, but a statement of appreciation to the entire financial department and purchasing in every department that has a role in the overall health, financial health of the department of the district. I was at a TASB board meeting last week, and they were sharing with us the year-end statistics for Buy Board, and Conroe ISD is receiving a check for over a hundred thousand dollars in rebate, excuse me, from Buy Board. We were the second highest district receiving a rebate. Only Houston ISD received a larger rebate than we did on, on Buy Board purchases. They're three and a half times our student population, and the rebate was less than double hours. So, thank you to everybody that's involved in that purchasing chain, because not only are you leveraging that cooperative buying power to get us the best deals on the day-to-day stuff we buy, but we're also receiving a financial rebate of over a hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year. So, thank you to everybody that's involved in that overall financial picture.
Good job, everyone. Thank you.
All right, executive session. Doctor Noel?
Thank you. This meeting of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees is convened on December seventeenth, twenty nineteen. A quorum of the board is present, including the following members, Mr. Moore, Mr. Husbands, Mr. Kidd, Mr. Williams, Mr. Hubert, Mr. Sanders, and Mr. Enman. The board will hear the complaint appeal of parent Kimberly A. in accordance with local board policy FNG. This hearing is being recorded. Ms. A.'s complaint is against various staff members at College Park High School. Because the complaint is against district employees and because personally identifiable information about public school students, including the discipline of public school students, could be revealed, the hearing will be held in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one dot oh seven-four, five-five-one dot oh eight-two, and five-five-one dot oh eight-two-one. The board will also go into executive session under Texas Government Code Section five-five-one dot oh seven-one for consultation with the board's attorney. The meeting is now adjourned to executive session under Texas Government Code Section five-five-one dot oh seven-one, five-five-one dot oh seven-four, five-five-one dot oh eight-two, and five-five-one dot oh eight-two-one. Everyone not associated with this hearing should leave the room. The board will take no action in the executive session. The time is now seven eighteen. The board has reconvened in open session. The time is now seven fifty-one. The board will now make its decision. The board can uphold the decisions of the Level One and Level Two hearing officers. The board can overturn the hearing officer's decisions, or the board can grant any relief they feel is appropriate. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we uphold the decisions of the Level One and Level Two hearing officers, and we deny any requested relief.
Gentlemen, we have a motion. Can I have a second?
I second the motion.
You have a second?
All those in favor?
You got it.
Thank you. Ms. Atkins, the district will send you written notice confirming the action taken by the board, and thus we'll conclude the hearing. Thank you all.
Do I go back in session?
I'm sorry?
Do I go back in and it's out?
Yes. It's back to you, sir.
We're in session.
You got to go in so we can come out.
Correct.
Okay.
Go in already.
We're in session.
We are in session. Right now, you need to take us back to. No, you need to take us back to executive session now.
Yeah, we got some other thing here.
Okay. You guys got to get me right here. All right, item. All right. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, we're good.
Yes, absolutely.
We'll get our act together at some point. Yes, thank you.
In session, out of session?
Thank you all. Yes.
Where we at?
You need to, you need to take us to executive session.
All right, executive session.
Out of executive?
Item.
You're out.
A closed, a closed session of the board will now be held on matters contained in notice for this meeting as authorized by Section five-five-one dot oh seven-one, five-five-one dot oh seven-two, five-five-one dot oh eight-two, five-five-one dot oh eight-two-one, and five-five-one dot oh seven-four of Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that a final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be held at either A, the public meeting upon reconvening of the public meeting, or B, at a subsequent meeting of the board upon notice thereof as determined, as the board shall determine. A closed session of the board will now be held. The time now, the time now is five, seven fifty, seven fifty-four PM. All right, we're now back in session. The time is eight thirty-five. Let's go, item. Where are we?
Nine A.
Nine A.